Good evening and welcome to the second evening of the committee, the holding Richmond Commune Council concerning the 2024 budget, presentations by the mayor and department heads. Tonight we have two absent councilors who have both come down sick, councillor Bumble and councillor Goff, so unfortunately they won't be here for the rest of this. But with that, I will begin the evening with the police pension fund.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, since I was here the last time, a year ago, I have lost two retirees and one widow off of the plan. This leaves me on the old plan with thirteen widows now and twenty-two retirees. Uh, I believe you've got all the information in front of you. What I have understood is the police have not settled a contract yet for next year, so all the figures you have are based on right now. Uh, the insurance, I think the insurance on there is a worst-case scenario according to share. Uh, rather than me go over all these, unless you want me to, but mine says the same thing.
Oh, just let people ask the questions that they have. So if anyone has questions, please feel free to ask.
Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
Do we have a number of retirees then going on pension?
There's only one other one that can go on this one.
Okay.
And that's Bill Shaker, uh, because he's still on the old plan. And that figures in there, uh, that's the fifty-three eight seventy-one is what his is based off of if he gets to leave today.
Any other questions?
Um, is he retiring? Does he want to drop?
He went, he went, he signed up for the drop years ago.
Oh.
And didn't go, so he can't sign up for it again.
Well.
Uh, I hear rumors that he's thinking about it, but I've heard him for twelve years.
You gotta put it in your budget for planning a case in the side.
Great, thank you.
Anybody else?
No further questions, thank you.
Fire pension fund.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Our budgets decreased a little bit from last year. Our pension obligation decreased by about thirty-eight thousand dollars, a little bit more than that. We lost one retiree, uh, or three retirees last year, and one of them had a surviving spouse, so, uh, we're actually have twenty spouses on our plan this year versus nineteen last year. The rest of the budget is staying the same, uh, physicals about fourteen thousand. We're expecting about six retirees to leave next year, uh, and that should cover hiring six more, send them pre-hire physicals. But other than that, everything else stays the same for us as well.
Questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Who have this problem?
How many are on the pension database?
Uh, we have, let's see, twenty-eight, uh, actual retirees and then twenty spouses.
Thank you.
And that's for the thirty-seven five.
Jeff?
That's the same question.
Other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Chief Brown.
What's the whole agenda?
I'm sorry.
Chief Brett.
Chief Brett.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yep. Give us a second to get our, uh, the line of.
Good evening, council members.
Good evening.
I appreciate your time undergoing this task that we do have a year. Uh, I'll tell you now, mine's gonna be just a little bit longer than the last two, but, um, a few months ago, I spoke with several of you in meetings, and I had numerous requests to increase my budget in several different areas. Um, being the situation that we're in with some budgeting challenges, what you have before you as presented twenty twenty-four budget is very similar to the twenty twenty-three budget, with very few changes. Bottom line is, is that, uh, if this budget is accepted by council, uh, police department will live within its means, and there will be just a couple of challenges. I'm not going to break this down into individual line items, however, there are, uh, a couple of things that I did want to mention this evening that just concerns things to maybe watch for, but one of the greatest ones, we have very little control over the one thousands, obviously, as a department head, who had more than I do, but, um, it bears mentioning, uh, line item thirteen zero two, which is overtime. We've been budgeted four hundred thousand dollars for overtime. Can't, uh, tell you just how, how close that figure is, that is, that's, that's very thin, and we will do our absolute best to stay within that range. Uh, I'm sure you're aware we're a number of people down, and overtime is just part of our culture now, and, uh, I'm sure you've, you've, uh, read the media and heard we've been fortunate enough to hire six policemen out in two months, but, uh, there's no salvation there yet. Uh, yeah, you have to understand the fact that these six people that we hired are no closer than the third quarter of next year, being beneficial to the department, and the latest three likely being the fourth quarter. So I have three that started the academy Monday, so they'll be home in about seventeen weeks, and then, uh, we just hired three more and we have them scheduled for January to start the academy, so, uh, there's relief on the way, but it's not here yet, so, uh, I'm fearful of that number, however, I'm sure Mayor Snow and Ms. Palmer, that we will try to live within those means. But, uh, um, there wasn't much change to the two thousands.
Mr. Chairman, is Chief Brett, uh, fleet gas and oil is up considerably from one eighty-five to two hundred and thirty thousand?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I tracked that very closely, um, with the remaining amount in the fleet gas and oil line item twenty-two eleven.
Yep.
Um, it's, we have eighty-nine thousand nine hundred and eighty-six dollars left available to use this year, and math's out, we're averaging fourteen thousand five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for fuel, and it works out that it'll be just, just enough.
Be close.
Yeah, but we should have, and something else too to factor in, that it's not just gasoline, uh, we might have engine oil on that too, we might have bulk in barrels, so the way I've got it figured out, we'll have four or five thousand dollars left at the end of the year to go ahead and get stocked up on motor oil, which is mysteriously has become very expensive here lately, so.
True.
But the initial budgeted amount of two hundred and thirty thousand dollars is a good amount. Uh, one of my fears is that we'll be starting getting negotiations for next year, fuel contract, and that's kind of scary, we don't know where we're gonna land with that, so. Any more questions on, uh, two thousands?
Mr. Chairman.
Great.
Mike, when do, when do those negotiations start on the fuel?
Well, I don't believe that they have. That will be negotiated, I think it's after the first year.
Um, I think she starts before the end of the year, October. Yeah, that's what I was.
So it won't be till the last minute till we know what the bulk fuel price will be, uh, next year. And the fuel prices have just been all over the place, so it's gonna be a, a figure, it's gonna be hard to pin down, but we've had good success with that in the past, but Kara and I teamed up together, both firework and watched the pump prices last year, and they, the vendor raised their pump prices in anticipation of the city's contract, to, to the point where they were twelve cents a gallon higher than any other competition, so we surmised they couldn't withstand that too long, so I saw the pump parts drop, and I thought we're gonna call them, so that we had a idea where we were at.
So how many officers are down now?
Well, um, I'll ask it the best way I can. We, we're fourteen officers down. We've hired six.
So they're not gonna be around until?
Yeah, they're not gonna be useful.
Wait.
I also have three out, long-term injuries, I just learned today, one I believe will be out in another nine months with an injury. Yeah, so, um.
So it's still fourteen?
The bud, the budget, as far as budgeted positions go, we are down, uh, eleven now. But, uh, we're having just a little bit of success in recruiting, not many applications, however, like the last time I spoke with you, some of the applications we were receiving weren't the best quality, but we've lined up, uh, a couple of good applicants yesterday too, who were interviewed, and offered some prompts, but recruiting is tough, and, uh, it's, it's always the same story, and I'm looking for, I'm always on the lookout for officers that wanna serve the Richmond community, however, you have, uh, police departments all over the state just offering tremendous amounts of money, and I used to be able to say that we offered cheaper costs of living, but Indiana State House changed that as well by removing, uh, residency requirements, so they can live anywhere in the state of Indiana and Ohio. So what I see, the trend that I see, that we've lost a couple of officers, went over the Hampton County area, Marion County area for the bigger money, and bought homes in Henry County to control the cost of, of living, so.
Yeah.
So it is, it is very tricky, but we are making headway, and just so you know, major bails is working in the program now, because we're initiating a hiring process every month now, which requires us to hire the testing company, and, so, a couple of the last processes we ended up with no successful applicants, so, as I said, we had read two yesterday that looked really good, so this is just gonna be a matter of keeping our nose to the grindstone, and we will get to the number that we want to get to. And hopefully that'll lighten the burden a little bit on overtime when we get more.
Mr. Chairman.
If I may make one more comment to you on twenty-two fifty, since we met in committee
weeks ago, ammunition targets.
Yes, sir.
Able to put nine thousand more in there, bring it up to thirty-five thousand, the cost of ammunition, that'll be enough? Will that be enough?
I understand that we, uh, I thought thirty-five thousand was the same amount.
It was twenty-six.
Mine ship's thirty-five.
Yeah, my chief. Yeah, thirty-five thousand. And I think I mentioned previously what we were doing to try to cut down on our consumption of ammunition, uh, you know, firing fewer rounds and more challenging scenarios, so, you know, conserve some ammunition, bottom line is very hard to get. We waited over a year for a shipment of ammunition at that point.
If you're not on, on the verge of running out of ammunition?
No.
Do you have a stockpile?
Yes, somewhat of a stockpile, yes.
A whole?
Yes.
Eight billion, it's all being state secret.
Boy, um, we're in good shape, and we will never be in this position again, but I feel comfortable telling me, I'll share with you, one particular time last year, the sweat was rolling on our foreheads because the only rifle ammunition we had is what the officers had in their cars, and that is not a good position to be in, but we have been getting the last-minute shipment. But I, I can live with thirty-five thousand dollars.
That was a good question.
Yeah.
And do you have a, a scheduled shipment coming for twenty twenty-four?
We have an order in, but there's, there's no schedule on the shipment, we just, a semi shows up one day.
You get it, you get it when you get it, that's our back order now.
And we've experimented, experimented with other sources, vendors, it's just very tricky to navigate, navigate when it comes to that. But we're in good shape now.
When you say you're cutting down on the use of ammunition, is that less practice for the officers?
Now, we still qualify monthly.
Okay.
And, uh, this department's standard, uh, the state of Indiana requires an officer to fire a long force from the academy qualification course once a year. We qualify, we have firearms training every month, and, uh, two of those twelve sessions are the academy course, two others we fire at night at the range, and then two of those are for rifle and shotgun. The, the other sessions are scenario-based, we have, usually have a tactical course, uh, that takes place at, uh, sometimes the old Pleasant View School building, do some active shooter training, and then, uh, this past month, if I don't mind sharing with you, our, our firearms qualification was a little more challenging than I thought, but we were fired from inside a vehicle at targets, and had to exit the vehicle and engage other targets, but it was, it was very challenging, however, it turned out to be eighteen rounds per officer, so as opposed to forty rounds, as I said, so, those are the types of things that we're initiating, more realistically based scenarios. My firearms instructor did a great job being creative with that. There were some requests that I made earlier in the year, I understand, those can't happen, but, um, one of the ones to talk about, one of the, one of the disappointments I had was, uh, in the three thousands, it's called technical services, that's a budget of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and I need to make that clear to everybody, that didn't go up, but that is what we fund the software licenses with, there are numerous software programs that takes from the police department, and every one of them change, uh, charges annual subscription fees, and that's, uh, that's about what it costs, and we had hoped to, uh, expand our software base just a little bit, that may have led to better times. But other than that, we're pretty satisfied, you'll see there's, uh, a reduction, uh, in the building maintenance, and that was a trade-off. Last year, or this year was the first time I'd ever received any taken my budget for building, and there were some things downstairs that really needed attention, and we were deep into that, so I was funded thirty thousand dollars, and that had never happened before, so I'm taking full advantage of it. However, the other line item that, uh, didn't get funded this year, rather accidentally, was the mayor commission fund, that's usually a twenty-eight thousand dollar amount every year, and, uh, we've, uh, budgeted me thirty-five thousand dollars for that, the reason for the increase is because of the constant hiring process, that fund that goes with the mayor commission is used in employment screening process, to hire the testing companies out of, out of Indianapolis, and, uh, so, it's expensive, it's expensive screening that many people, and, uh, so, I appreciate, uh, the mayor getting that back in our budget because that was, been challenging this year, and, uh, and also next year's promotional cycle, so the mayor commission is involved with the promotional process and testing, for, testing for public safety that goes along with that, as the interviews and such, so we'll use every nickel of that money to move the vice around.
Mr. Chairman. Chief, uh, the grant match on thirty-nine seventy-five, is that for your vest, or is that for something else that you need?
No, the, uh, that particular line item is what we fund, the way I drove past from here.
Okay, what about your vest, uh, are you getting that out of the Bushland retain? Do you have, my question is, do you have enough money to replace your vest if it needs to be replaced?
Yes, we do, yeah. The reason for that is CCD. Um, we're, we're buying our vests out of CCD fund, which we were fortunate enough to be, be funded, I think it was a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars, and for equipment, and, uh, that, that seems to cover it thankfully, it's broken out over multiple years, this year I think we're buying ten vests, and they are not cheap.
No.
We buy the best that we can get for people, so.
So any other questions for this part of our police report?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mike, uh, how about vehicles? Is that on here somewhere?
That wouldn't be on this account, would it?
No. Yeah, that's in CCD.
I think you said you're getting four next year, but you need eight until?
Always need eight, but I understand.
Well, let's hope, let's hope it's in CCD.
So, so the portion of the CCD funding that comes in for police vehicles and equipment is a hundred and forty thousand dollars. Uh, simple math on that is the price of cars have gone up drastically. Um, the days of, you know, twenty nineteen, the council blessed me with buying me twenty, over twenty cars, and at that time we were buying chargers for twenty-six thousand dollars apiece, those days are gone, we just purchased four of the last charger that ever we made, and they were thirty-four thousand dollars apiece, so that limits my options, and we won't even discuss this if at a later date we get down on the weeds of, of choice of vehicle, but, uh, it's a Dodge Durango, Ford Explorer, Chevrolet Topo, and the basic Durango, which has been the lowest price so far, is now over forty thousand dollars, and the Ford Explorers are about forty-two thousand, and the Chevrolet Tapos are almost forty-five thousand or so. At some point we'd like to get into a conversation on, on your input, but, uh, weighing out the options of going ahead and getting the heavier, heavier chassis.
So there's no more Savans then?
No, no Savans on the market at all. Dodge has promised they'll replace the Charger, but it's going to be an electric vehicle in twenty twenty-five, and electric's just not going to work in this situation, but.
Everyone moved the CCD on their downshifts.
Mr. Chairman?
Great.
I have a question, on the scooter registration fees, do we no longer do that at all? Why not?
Because the state's required to be registered to the year of motor vehicles in the state.
So we've lost any income from that?
We certainly have. We've lost a lot of it from the state.
Compliments?
Compliments is one of them, which I'll skip ahead just a little bit, but, um, I would, or whoever's in my position next year, I'm going to encourage to, um, take on some city ordinance changes, and in the interest of drawing revenue from certain services that we, that we perform, such as traffic accident records, uh, photographs, those types of things, uh, it's been discussed, there's a lot of revenue to be had for simple records checks, however, I'm going to stand in opposition to that, because most of the people that come in for a simple records check don't need to be charged because they need the job, you know, employers might be able to pay that, but there are some, some possibilities that might get introduced to council, ways to help replace that trade fund for, and it's not going to be policing for profit either.
How much were we collecting in scooter fees, what we were collecting?
I, I don't have a figure for that, and again, scooter fees, just like animal tags, dog tags, we, we only got thirty, forty percent compliance with that from the city, they're from our citizens, so best-laid plans don't comply with it, so what we ended up having was just a lot of scooters sitting in town, and it does nobody any good, but again, there's thirty, maybe forty percent compliance or something like that, I think, uh, Karen Chesney made the statement the past week that there's an incredible, uh, low amount of, of dogs in the city by license.
Checks.
The function, yeah, yes, so, compliance is a big thing, but I, I also have to say that, um, there's a mechanism in place now, instead of magistrate and spirit goal three to actually prosecute, to go after, uh, people that don't buy my city ordinance, so, there's some, there's some changes that can be made to that. But overall, um, I didn't get everything that I wanted, none of us will, department heads can understand that, and I also understand the budgeting challenges, Mr. Chairman, so I'm, I'm thankful to have a proposed budget similar to what I had this year.
Any more questions on CCD? Any more questions on CCD?
Did we answer the question about vehicles?
Yes, yes, a hundred and forty thousand is what I was budgeting for vehicles, that will, that will get me through.
Three?
Yes, it's due to the price increases, and it's not just the vehicle prices, I want to have some equipment that goes on that have gone up and are getting difficult to, to find, uh, there's some real kinks in the, in the, uh, getting the parts, and, and, or Chief Brown can tell you, I don't know how long he waited before he got license iron and all that, but it's, so, we ordered way ahead for the four chargers that we have now, and they're actually in, but it's considerably more expensive as well.
Will you have enough police guards for next year?
Yes, as long as I don't go full staff. If I go full staff, I don't have enough cars, but, um, we're seeing, we had a lot of discussions a few years ago about, about my fleet, and I, I wanted to desperately retire, some of the older ones that I think are formerly, that we came up with at the time, was ten years, a hundred and twenty thousand, with the wild fleet, were over ten years, and then there's still about twenty loads on the street, and they're doing well, I mean, they're durable vehicles, and we credit that with this outstanding maintenance plan, yeah, but now I have twenty eleven that the frames are resting on, so we're parking those with this option, a few of those from twenty-twelve are not far behind, so, um, so the bigger challenge with that, which will bring me to a little line item of the three thousands, is the, uh, the, uh, vehicle parts. I initially requested additional amount, that was a couple of years ago, set at sixty thousand dollars, and that's since been lowered, and, uh, we'll, we'll live within those means, but I do want you to know that as the cars age, the, the maintenance costs of them go up.
So have you considered alternatives to vehicles? On foot, bicycles? I'm serious, I mean, I'm not being.
I, I know what you're saying, and we have bicycles downstairs, they're, they're police bikes, and we have numerous officers who train in that, but the practicality of them, this all in health is just, is not realistic.
I can't do it in winter.
And we can't haul, we can't haul a prisoner on the back of a bicycle for a month, same reason.
Yes, sir, officer safety, it's your journey, what you're doing with her, so.
Yeah, so you can't haul a prisoner on those, and that's the same as the three-wheel motorcycles that we finally built ourselves, they're kind of, they're very impractical, this is how to run an, an efficient police department, and as I view motorcycles and segways, that's fluff that a lot of the better-funded communities can afford to, to venture into, can keep it the basics and keep the proper equipment for my officers that, that it takes to do the job. Uh, bicycles are a great option, but not when we're fighting to keep our shifts and minimum manpower, for everybody that comes out to work, a patrol shift needs to be mobile or a car, and, obviously, bicycle patrol is, is a wonderful thing, people in this city love to see that, love to see a policeman get out and walk, greet with him. People in this city love to see that, love to see a policeman get out and walk, greet with him, they'll speak with him. But right now, the prime directive is to keep the street staff to take the calls. As I said, we still have six bicycles downstairs taking them along. It's, it's certainly impractical to deploy at this time.
Any other questions? Well, we go down.
Not requesting or haven't requested any change in the, in reductions in the animal control line items. Those are, those are good, good amounts. Animal control does not require a lot of capital investment. About every ten years, I need to buy a new pickup truck, but other than that, she's equipped with leases and cash bowls. And I'm also branching out into further training for animal control officer. One of the things that, she's been to numerous training sessions. This is her second year of police department, she's doing pretty well. But one of the things that I need to get her trained in, that school is rarely offered, is tranquilizer. We have all that equipment. So thankfully, in the budget, there's training money built into that.
Mr. Chairman?
This is Burke.
When, when she goes out on a call, does she check with, for the license on each animal she checks on?
Yes, if you can find an owner. That's the big thing now. She gets a lot of dog calls, runs into a lot of dogs that has no record.
What do we do with that dog then?
All the time, they'll go to Newcastle to, to the shelter. We haul a lot of animals to the Henry County Department. But once, once the police get involved, people hand off stuff, my dog, because they know it's not registered or it's done something egregious, so.
According to the number of tags that we sold so far this year, there's forty-five dogs and cats in the neighborhood.
I believe that. She does check, and there has been a few, few tickets, but not a lot.
I think we ought to write a ticket every time we find a dog without a tag.
Well, the problem is finding somebody to take responsibility for the animal, somebody to claim ownership. That's, that's where women are the problem. If nobody, if somebody looks out the window and sees their dog has stirred up a problem, they're hands off. My dog. So it's, it's a catch-22. It's very difficult to identify who's responsible for that animal. Always, always been that way.
Years ago, they used to sell dog tags door to door to door. And what they would do, they would go to one door and say, "Does your neighbor have a dog?"
And just keep repeating.
Get back on her horse and go to the next door?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, whatever.
I didn't, I didn't say that.
I get it.
So any other special revenue funds? Are there any items that we usually do? Because we've got a whole batch of them.
Special revenue.
So now it includes law enforcement aid?
We have donation funds. We have a good amount of money in donations. Quite honestly, I'll admit something to you right now. Revenue funds are somewhat of a mystery. I wouldn't know where we had some balances there until we started later into this year. Talking about that, Tracy and Emily and I have had some discussions about how to spend some of that revenue. There's guidelines, most of it's grand money.
Most of it historically has been used for training. It has been budgeted the same for twenty-four as it has in years past. And we're also going to start doing some research with Baker Tilly. We have a great consultant now that previously worked specifically on grants for the SDOA, and he's gonna help us track down all the specific uses, usages of the various funds. Some of them could take a while to track back because they're gonna wanna look at the original grant documentation. But my position is, is if there are things that have expired or no longer being able to be used, if we can't use them, we should send them back. So we're digging into that.
Spending these funds can be very tricky. Very easily, instead of the guidelines, you can spend it on the wrong thing. So we're trying to do our homework and do this right. There may be some relief there for training funds. It's just too soon to tell. And thanks to some forensic accounting by Tracy and Emily, I think we're really aware of what we had in there. The drug diversion grant that sponsors the drug takeback and all that. What do we have eighty, eighty-seven thousand dollars lying in that pack? We have no idea how we can get that eighty-seven thousand dollars. So I'm sure, council's sealed, it's not something that I've tracked recently. Obviously, lots of the dollars go outdoors.
And these, these funds have been like this for a while. So I, I think that it's worthwhile to look into the specifics of how they can be spent and trying to supplement the needs as best as we can to use them. Or, like I said, send them back if there's not some way that we can utilize them.
They're part of the audit.
One other area that I think we were scheduled to discuss, and that was capital, capital projects. I don't have a lot. The, the main project that I'm seeking to finish up is one I've been working on for a few years now. And I think we're very close, possibly first quarter of next year. Be able to move towards an encrypted radio system. That should have, there's been a lot of research done with the, the radio vendors, the statewide radio network. When this started out, that was about a two-hundred-thousand-dollar venture. But we have learned a lot through the state, and the Indiana State Police is now encrypting as well. We could learn quite a few things from them. But it is simply going to be a matter of bringing an ERS technician in and plugging into each radio and uploading the code. That will create the encryption, and there's no per-radio fee. We're simply going to pay technicians hourly their service call. So the cost of that would be pretty low.
Have you any particular money earmarked for the radio system? I see a fifteen-thousand-dollar line item.
It's for fire radios.
Yes, it is.
I have a line item in my budget for radio repairs. However, we have historically maintained an asset for line item. At one time, twenty sixteen, that was half a million dollars for that. We had collected through federal cases that we've been involved in. So we are, we made some huge purchases out of that. That's the only reason we have any car radios. That, that one particular purchase was two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars. We're very thankful that we have those funds to do that. We have made that fund last this long, and I believe I still got ninety thousand dollars in that.
Ninety-eight.
Ninety-eight thousand. So the radio...
Another fifty is pending.
Well, the radio project, as far as the encryption, that'll be my treat.
Any other questions? Let me bring your attention.
Pardon?
Any other items you'd like to bring to our attention?
I think I've covered most of them. Probably said too much, but I thank you for hearing all of them.
Questions from council? Well, thank you, Chief Britt. Maybe next year we'll have more money.
You're optimistic, aren't you? Thank you.
You get old enough, you get optimistic. All right, now it's Chief Brown's turn.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Do you need a second to pull up your data? Okay. Slow process, I'm sorry.
All right, I understand. But to, to begin with, this is my first year of going through the budget process. When they came to us, or the administration came to us and said, "Put together your budget." It's exactly what we attempted to do. I went to all the divisions within the fire department and asked for two things. I asked for a budget for their division as needs, and then I asked for a budget for their wants. And then they submitted that to the fire administration office. Assistant Chief Joe Butler and I sat down, and we went through those, and we developed what we thought was a fair and equitable twenty-twenty-four budget. When we came to the committee the first time, as you recall, just about every line item that we had, we had an increase of some sort. We did try to take into account of the cost inflation. Things are going up, things are getting harder to get, so we tried to, to pre-plan a little bit and to, to forecast and look ahead. Then came the meeting of the reality of the situation. So we had to go back and readjust our budget, and readjust, and readjust to where we came back to virtually. As you'll see, we are proposing the same twenty-twenty-three budget for twenty-twenty-four with a, with a few exceptions. The one thousand accounts, virtually no changes there. Had very, didn't have much to say about the one thousand accounts as the finance department, as they are the experts for finances, took care of that for us. However, they did tell me that we're gonna have to take overtime back to, to the cap of nine hundred thousand dollars. We're gonna do our very best to stay within that. We do find some of that challenging because we are trying to do outside training. We're trying to get firefighters better trained, paramedics better trained, and that kind of thing. But we will, we will do everything we can to stay within that. As you can see, in the two thousands accounts, there are no changes. In the three thousand accounts, there are no changes. And in the four thousand accounts, there's no changes.
Questions? Any questions? Mr. Chairman? Mr. Engel? Tim, with the overtime, is the, the ambulance service or the paramedic, is that paying part of that?
It is.
That's the proposal?
Yes.
How much of it is it paying?
Half.
Half? Is that the same as this year?
Mr. Chairman?
This is Burke.
On your repair and maintenance equipment, I see it stays the same, but at present time, you've only spent sixty-four hundred dollars. Do you have a lot of bills that haven't been paid yet?
We have some that are, that haven't been brought forward for POs and things like that, yes.
So you anticipate using all thirty?
We're gonna use everything that we have.
Okay, thank you.
And also, these numbers are only as of six-thirty, so there's one fact that is...
Other questions? All right, Chief Brown, let's move on to your next category, which is the CCD.
Okay, CCD. In the other equipment line, we're looking at purchasing radios. We have to, we have to stay up to date as much as we can with the portable radios every firefighter on the engine and in the ambulances all have radios for their safety. So we have a lot of fifteen thousand for fire radios. And then the other equipment line item, there is a multitude of things that need to be replaced every year. We're also looking to purchase another ambulance at a cost of about three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. They've gone up considerably since we started EMS. Also in that, we are looking to replace some of our ballistic vests. Unfortunately, the way things have come around, we are now, all of our seats in our engines and all the seats in the ambulances all have ballistic vests in them. So if they respond to some type of incident that requires that, they'll be able to dog them and be safe. We have to get on a replacement schedule for that. For us to be able to get on a proper replacement schedule, we figure that we have to buy twenty-one vests next year. Quite costly.
How old are they?
Uh, we're at four years old now.
What line item reflects the fire truck you were talking about? The rear forty?
It's in the EMS though.
EMS.
EMS? What line item? It's a different project?
Yeah, it's a different project.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Can I help you?
Just checking.
Any other questions? Thanks. Well, let's move on then. Two EMS.
EMS, there are virtually no changes in the two thousands, three thousands, and again, in the four thousand accounts. This will be where we will be buying the ambulance from in the forty-four, thirty-six account. And also, we're looking to build a storage garage for the equipment that we now have purchased and it's staying stored outside. The training ground, we did, we do have a garage there, but however, the concrete wasn't poured thick enough to be able to be a storage facility for apparatus. It's only four inches thick instead of the six or eight inches thick that we need for a pumper. So right now, we have a pumper parked on, and our drone vehicle is parked there. So we would like to build a storage facility to get those out of there before we have more maintenance nightmares at the training center.
Mr. Chairman?
This is Burke.
I have a question on under supplies, twenty-four eleven, EMS supplies. If my figures are right, three-hundred-and-thirty-nine thousand spent this year?
We are just about to that point, yes.
Where do we get all that money?
We get it from the revenue coming from the EMS incidents that we built from.
And that was one of the items that you did additional appropriation for, is that correct?
Yes.
Other questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Engel?
With the EMS, the thirteen oh-two overtime, you're budgeting five thirty-nine, five-hundred-and-thirty-nine thousand?
Correct.
For next year?
Correct.
How much of that will be paid with proceeds from the ambulance service?
All of it.
Oh, all of it? Okay. Thank you.
So have we done an additional appropriation yet for that line item? I see we've got an imbalance between the budget and the spend already.
Yeah, that's just showing budgeted amounts, it's not over budget. If you're recalling, did like a three million dollar additional appropriation earlier this year?
Oh, okay, we included that. Other questions?
Mr. Chairman?
This is Burke.
Thirty-nine eleven. 3911, the training. You budgeted 66, you spent 5,800. A lot of training yet to be done, or?
Yes, we are bringing outside instructors in for better instruction for our paramedics. Special kaptainography classes, special EKG classes. And we also just done a cadaver lab where we had to, for those to come be transported here, so those POs aren't, have been put in yet.
And that's increased now from 66 to 90?
Yes. Some of that is because we sent, we ordinarily send six students or six of our members to paramedic class, and this last year, we sent 10, so we had to appropriate money to get the money from the other four to go to class.
And that's to come out of the 24 budget then?
243 budget, yeah.
But in 2024, you're going to also need an additional 24,000, right?
Yes, sir.
And that's for the training now?
Training.
Mr. Chairman, is that the same, you're sending 10?
No, we found that sending the 10 members to class put a really a restraint on the fire department as a whole with overtime and trying to fill the seats as they're gone, so we're not going to do that again. We're going to revert back to the six. What we were trying to do is, we were always needing paramedics, and we had those 10 members that were able to go and ready to take paramedic class, and we were trying to get to that number to where we are saying we need paramedics all the time. But unfortunately, it didn't prove to be prudent to do so.
So why the increase to 90,000 for next year?
For the, we're also doing additional training within the department, bringing outside instructors in.
Any other questions on 2215? If not, let's move on to 2238, which is a small budget.
There's only one change to the hazardous materials budget. We were asking for a $15,000 increase, and that's due to outside contractors coming in and helping us get to the seat of fires. Northwest F Street, we had those come in to help us extinguish that fire quicker. We had another, a large barn fire on the southeast side that they came in and pulled the metal off the seat of the fire so we could extinguish, so we just want to have some funds in there to be able to pay those, and that's what we're needing.
True. Any questions about that? Let's move on to 2216.
2216 is the paramedicine program. The grants for that program are going to be ending in May of 2024. We're looking for additional funding through additional grants, and we're also looking for money from other organizations to help us fund that. We are prepared to fund some of that through the EMS budget if those grants don't come through.
Any questions?
How much is that grant?
The grant, I believe, is $2 million.
Is that over a period of years?
It was, it's over a period of two years.
And that's ending in May?
Yes, May of 2024, May 30th.
Any other questions? I think that does, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, for your time, consideration.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Brad.
I'm here to present sanitation 6601 tax fund for you today. Going through here, I will start with the tab on the 6601 without code enforcement, but it kind of alleviates some confusion. But Eric talked about his section. Going through here, the 5,000 account, the revenue account, primarily this is tax funds. Controller Palmer walked through that yesterday in her opening statements, so I didn't stand on the air. Is there a question in the 5,000 accounts?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Parker.
I guess I have a question, earning on investments?
That's from our investments. The interest of our investments.
We did quite well.
It's split. We have $15 million amongst the city as a whole that we made investments in. Was that 19,019? Any income, we continue to reinvest, 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 so those returns are then allocated appropriately to those funds that contribute into that $15 million of the cash.
So we make 272,000?
Okay, that's correct.
We also get a gains, meaning on top of legal interest.
Principle. That's good, thank you.
Any other questions on the 5,000s? Moving on to the 1,000 accounts.
Is this still code enforcement?
This is the tab without code enforcement.
So I'm looking at combined details, is that correct?
No, go one more over to write, should say RSD 6601 without. But moving into those 1,000 accounts, this is up slightly. As Controller Palmer stated in her opening statements, the AFSC, meaning bargaining unit, their contract includes them with a increase there, and then the insurance that was also discussed there as part of that.
How much was the AFSC increase?
That contract was done a little differently than normal. It wasn't a straight percentage across the board. If you remember, the city did the Baker-Tilly salary study. That identified a market value or average value per job title, and the union elected, what they did is they took each title from where it was compared to that average, and over the three-year contract, they moved one-third of the way, each title moves one-third of the way towards that market value. Any other questions on the 1,000s? Moving on to the 2,000s. This group is up a little bit, up about $37,000. This is primarily from fuel, which is account number 6601-0506-203-2210. It's about two-thirds of the way down that 2,000s list. The 0506 there is for the actual collections, so it's the trash trucks and the recycled trucks running. But of the 37,000 increase, 32, of that, of all the 2,000s, the 37,000 increase, about 32,000 of that is fuel. As everybody stated before you, fuel is sort of an unknown. It's kind of just banking on where we are now and through this year, and we're just kind of using that as an estimate.
So did you combine 2210 and 2211? Because 2211 is fleet gas and oil, and it's zero. 2210, you have vehicle operation and maintenance.
Yeah, for whatever reason, sanitation historically, all fuel is put under, anytime you see vehicle operation and maintenance, that is primarily just fuel. I think that was, my predecessor did that, they were streamlining just the number of accounts, and they took that, but that's all fuel. And that is primarily what's going on in the 2,000 accounts. The other, one other notable increase I will call out is there's about a $3,000 increase in the general supplies line, which is 6601-0505-202-2410. The district purchased an asset management software at the end of last year, and that increase there reflects the hardware that will go with that once that software is implemented. Are there any other questions about the 2,000s accounts?
Nope.
All right, move on to the 3,000 accounts. The 3,000 accounts are up $145,000. In these accounts here, there's a lot of moving parts here on a few accounts, I guess I may go a little off some word, but there's a few accounts that have significant moves. First being the professional services account, which is maybe about a third of the way down that list of the 3,000s, but that is 6601-0505-301-3120. This account is up about 48,000. I do want to denote, though, that there is 55,000 in that total of this account. That is pending a 50% grant as part of upgrading that recycling, it comes with marketing, waste audits, and things of that nature. So 55,000 of that line item is pending a 50% grant. Next piece, the significant move is 6601-0505-301-3990, the contractual services line. That line is down, $116,000. So that was, part of that was used for that asset management software that we purchased, and then there's some other contractual services we use that we're now doing in-house that we made a move towards last year. So again, we're saving 116,000 in that contractual services line. The next piece I'll talk about is down at lease payment, which is 6601-0505-312-3815, lease payment. This is up 19,000, well, almost 20,000. This year, we had to, part of the lease, the equipment that's leased under here is our flush trucks for our sewer maintenance crew, and their large flush truck had to be redone this year. The old lease was up, so with that new lease was this increase in lease costs. The next line I will discuss is transfer funds, 6601-0505-312-3974. This one is down, $23,875. Primarily, the things that come out of this transfer funds is funds that go to our capital improvement funds, and what goes to pay off BONI, so for bond payments. The bond payment's about 150,000 of that total. We're just sending less to the improvement funds this year on this piece, and it's a little confusing, if you look at the line below, I'll go into that too. It was an accident on our apartment, it'll still work. The GIS, which is the very line right below that, the 3979, that accidentally got included in this transfer fund. So realistically, the transfer fund is down 50,000 or 51,000. And that GIS, which shows it's, we're saving 28, is actually the same as it was the year before, so it's really the transfer fund is down 51,000. The last one I'm really going to talk about in the year that I have to note for is the leaf program, which is a couple further down, 6601-0505-312-3989. This one is up, $236,536. As you all know, sanitation pays the street department for collecting leaves within the city. Sanitary district collects leaves that are outside of the city but inside of the district. That agreement was about seven years old. The mayor asked that that get updated, and so that was updated, and that is what the new value, not to me, is a $236,536 increase in that collection piece.
Mr. Chairman. I just, since he had mentioned that, we, Cronin Associates has been the financial advisement group for the sanitation department for some years. We had not reevaluated the leaf program or the pilot program for sanitation for some time, and as we know, fuel costs have gone up, manpower costs have gone up, and equipment costs, so we asked Cronin to reevaluate the costs of the street department picking up the leaves to keep them out of the sewer system, and that's what brought the increase that Pat has been giving out.
Correct, and they basically use the same formula that was used last time, they just use these updated values for the increases when they released it out there. That is all I have on the 3,000s, unless there are questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Parker.
On the 3995 building demolition?
Is that under, does that have a 318 right after the 6601?
Yes.
Okay, that's code.
That will be Derek's.
That's next.
I will have a question rather than Derek. I have another question. On your 506, 505, 4490, other equipment, would you like to speak to that for me, please?
Yeah, I was just coming up to the cap, we can go into the 4,000s. Yeah, so there's two, there's a 0506 and an 0505. Specifically, what's the question specifically, just want to know what those have?
Well, 743,000, we only spent 135,000, you're asking for 899.
Of that 135, though, so in that, that's in the 0506, that has trash trucks in it, and there are two that have already been awarded, but they're getting their contracts, so together, they were about 500,000. So that would bring the total for this year up to about 635,000. The other remaining part is, we have about 100,000 in there that replaces our containers, so residential containers and three yard tubs. So realistically, we would spend all of this.
And next year, we're going to do?
Next year, it's at 860. Specifically, I can give you what we have in there. So the big key players in there is, there's two trucks that are coming around. If you remember, last year, we talked about the commercial fleet needs replaced, the commercial trash trucks. We were looking to lease them, but nobody, you know, it's just hard to get trucks right now, they weren't leasing, so we just bought one. That's one of the ones I was referring to here to the buffer this year. We have another one coming up for next year, then we try to keep that fleet before it goes bad. So that's one of those, and we have another truck that replaces, we were still keeping a Packer, which is like a 20-year-old truck that we use as backup for the recycle, but it's getting to the point that it's just not serviceable anymore, so this will be a backup, one of the trucks to recycle. So there's about 500 of that 860, it's just those two trucks alone. The good news, we don't have it in here, but the backup recycle truck is a strong candidate for the grants that we're putting out for the upgrades in MRF, so we're hopeful we get that. We were able to get that a couple of years ago on the cardboard truck, which again, recycling has those, and those grants are typically 50/50 match, so we're hoping we can get about 175 or so in grant money to knock that down, but I just looked.
You keep saying 860?
Yes, this morning, is your show the 899?
Yes.
This morning, what I found, there was a duplicate entry in the 0505 and the 0506, so we look at duplicate out of the 0506, so that takes it to 860.
Thank you.
Overall, though, the 4,000s are down $69,000 from last year. Again, that's various, just projects and equipment that are in there, they're, they're big pieces, so that's why that number moves a little. I discussed, the recycle truck could get that 50% match. There is another $30,000 in here that is pending a 50% match. What that would be is, the Richie containers, I've talked a little about this, how we're upgrading the MRF building, we're looking to upgrade how we do that, that equipment's old beyond its useful life. I won't dive too deep in the weeds, but our process is, we collect Richies one week, and the next week, we sort. Through a lot of study, I don't think we need to sort, I don't think we're big enough to replace that capital for that, which would be very expensive, about a million dollars. I think we can do away with that and collect the other week as well, because roughly 40-some percent of Richmond has a Richie, and I think there's a lot of room to grow that landfill diversion. I wouldn't need more trucks, I wouldn't need more staff, I just think we move away from sorting when that equipment goes down. So this, that $30,000 pending the grant would be the Richies to supplement the rest of Richmond, making sure we have enough to keep that. That is all I have on the 4,000s, unless there are further questions?
I have one question. What, what does the double asterisk mean? Does that mean it's from one account to the other account?
No, it usually means in the SNA that I've put in opening, which means I line item, so like if you were to pull this up in the SNA, you would see those trucks that I was referring to. It has an underlayer in there of all the notes I put in, so you'll see that in a lot of our accounts, there's a note under pretty much every, every line in all of it.
Well, the reason I ask that is because tires and tubes are in here two different times, and I assume that's, one's a 505 and one's a 506?
Probably, yeah, there's about a duplicate of every line, because there's an 0505 and an 0506. 0505 is really like admin splits. 0505 is really like admin splits, admin splits, and just administration side. And 0506 typically is just the collection side, just the trash trucks.
Makes it difficult to understand if you don't use this budget every day like you do.
Oh, completely, and in the, when you go to the 6201, which is not presented here, but it has four sub-accounts, 0504, 0505, 0507, 0508. And it does get, it's very hard sometimes to know exactly where you're jumping around. And multiple people have multiple hands and multiple accounts, so you know, it's taken a lot of time for me to, to organize that and make sure I, that's why I have so many notes, and so I can kind of keep track of what's where. So who's touching what pieces. Any other questions?
Pat, 0505, 43, 4321, capital projects.
Yes.
Budget, 172, 20950, and spent a million eight.
We had additional appropriations.
Yeah, we had additional appropriations this year, so.
What was that project?
It was in last year's budget, so that is for the Hayes Short Creek Lift Station. It was, 50% was paid out of this, it was in the 2022 budget, but we weren't able to close on that project until the beginning of '23. So we just re-appropriated that 1.8 million into the 2023 budget, but it was set aside in the 2022 budget.
Thank you. Any other questions?
If not, I will quickly jump into the 6607, which is the capital improvement fund, so tax fund, which is near the very end of all of that. Yes, 6607, maybe the very last one.
It is.
Again, what tab are we on?
It would say 6607, the very last one.
You're right. Well, let's wait on that. It's always right.
As I've mentioned in the, in the 6601 budget, in that 3974, that transfer funds, which I said was primarily money, and money's moving into the capital improvement. This shows that $200,000 coming into this. That is set aside for the high-rate treatment, a portion of that high-rate treatment split. And then capital outlay is going out. There is landfill self-instruction, which is closure, which is $252,000. We don't know if that will be needed, it really depends upon IDEM. They kind of give us that notice, but we wouldn't put it in there to be prepared, because we know we're getting close on airspace. If you remember, though, when we did the rates on the landfill last year, the, historically, capital was always split out of tax on landfill. What we've done is weaved away from that. This would be, though, this is not, 252 is not even a half split, it's much lower. And the next year, we would see no money going into the improvement funds from the tax to cover landfill capital items. That would be the year we weaved it off, we just had to build up that from the landfill side in this year of, with that rate going up. But that isn't there for the, the cell closure, should it be needed this year. And the other piece of the capital project, which is a portion of the design of the high-rate treatment project, that isn't. And those were set aside kind of at the creation of this capital improvement fund in 2020 for the high-rate treatment. And that's all I have on the 6607, unless there are questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Pat, how much life do we have left in landfill?
Approximately 50 years, 35 to 50 years. That's at current feeding rates, as a projection of current densities. Part of the reason I talked that we're looking to upgrade the MRF is the EPA put out a strategy about a year ago. They're really looking to increase landfill diversion. They were wanting to create, this isn't specific towers, but just nationally, they believe 50% can be diverted from what nationally goes to landfills. And I don't know this, but I would suspect that some level of that becomes a mandate in the next five years. So that's one of the reasons we were looking to, our equipment's failing in the MRF, and one of the reasons we wanted to get on this is we believe that'll be mandated. So, is to try to be ahead of that curve, so we can make that last longer. But we're always looking at other things that will help extend the life of, of landfill as it is now. We explored in this last one, new opportunities on lining. We used to zoom just all clay bottom, but now there's some synthetic liner that gives you more headspace at the end. It's just a lot less depth that you have to do on the bottom. So trying to explore things like that, so we can make it go as long as we can. It's, I think it's one of those underestimated pieces of how much it saves local citizens to have that landfill, how much it keeps trash costs down, having one locally.
Thank you. We're two next.
I'm done, and if there are. What's there are questions?
Any more questions? Well, thank you, Pat.
Yep, thank you.
Derek, you're up. Your tab is on this.
It's the fourth tab, it's RSD 6601 code enforcement detail.
Got it. Take it away. Come, tell me, where is?
It's the fourth tab from the first, from the first one, it's the fourth. It's 6601 code enforcement detail.
Under the sanitary issue?
Yes, sir.
I have a request. I was thinking about this today, it'd be so much better if you had a yellow background on these tabs. They'd be, for those of us with blind.
I can make any color you like.
We ready?
6601.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I will start with the 2,000, since the 1,000s have already been covered by Emily. Looks like I had three increases. With the 2130, the office supplies, it was small, 500. 2410, our general supplies was increased 500. And also, the 2210, our gas was increased 2,000.
Question?
Nope. Okay.
All right, so moving on to the 3,000, 3210 telephone and fax increased 500 from last year. 3220, our postage increased from 2,000 to 4,000? No, from 3,000 to 4,000. No, that's not right. From 3,000 to 4,000, that's correct, I'm sorry. And then 3310, our legal publications increased also 1,000.
Mr. Chairman.
Ready to move on?
Mr. Parker.
3995.
3995.
Building demolition.
$200,000. We only spent 13,000.
That just shows what we've done as of what Emily said back up to June.
6601, yeah.
And that doesn't include the.
Should be several more.
That doesn't include the 12, the 12 buildings that, that we're working on and the 18 that are still in the unsafe building process. So all our, all our demos are almost a two, a two-year process, okay? Especially if they, if they appeal them, or they, they want more time, or things like that. So it could take potentially up to two years to get a building demo. Some go faster than that, you know, so we spend the money. But I'm always afraid if I don't have the money there and everything is moving rapidly, then I can't get it done. So some of these, we're still working on from last year, and maybe even the year before that.
So how many do you think you might get done in the next six months?
Well, it's hard to tell, I have to, I have to wait on, on law and see how many they get done. I think we have eight in process right now that we just tore down, one, two, three. Just tore four down, and that's probably close to 50 grand right there, so.
It just looks like we're budgeting a lot more than what we're using.
I, I don't really think we are. I mean, we, we are, but we have all these buildings that are, are on backboard, so to speak, that we have to, we know we have to pay for when we get to that point. So we can either say, okay, well, you know, we can take a chance and not pay for them, you know, or, and then leave that by the situation unattended, or, you know, we leave the money in the accounts so that when that, when we get to that, it's taken care of.
It's city policy that when we have a contract to buy, those funds are available and encumbered in a purchase order, which carries over from year to year until the purchase is complete. So we would not enter into a contract for purchase without having the money already encumbered for that purchase, even if it carries over for another year.
So most of this will be carried over, probably?
If, if that's, if he does end up waiting that period of time.
Derek, when we see houses that have been boarded up, is that a sign that they're in the unsafe building process, or are they literally declared unsafe at that point?
That is, it, it depends. Because some, some of the property owners board them up themselves, you know, and then we, we have the process where we do it ourselves. Some of them are going to the Unsafe Building Commission. Some of them, we haven't gotten to that point, they were just a nuisance. There were squatters taking over. It had a small fire there, and the fire department asked us to board them up, and things like that. So what we try to do is get in the process of actually putting them in the unsafe building so that we can hold these property owners accountable.
Right.
But as you know, some of them, you know, show up, some of them don't, you know, so.
I hate to estimate how many homes are boarded up in Richmond right now.
I don't know if that's a thing or not.
It is a bunch. So I concur that you need a couple hundred grand annually to anticipate the need, so. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Eric.
Do Derek ever get reimbursed for any of those?
Yes.
Buildings? Where is that on?
Well, I don't have that off here, I don't know where they have it.
I think it goes to the unsafe building, is that correct?
It goes to town fund.
No.
I don't, I don't know.
I know the weed cutting goes to sanitation. If something's demolished through the unsafe building process, it would go to.
Reimbursements, it's in miscellaneous receipts under unsafe building reimbursements.
Where is that?
That's in unsafe building, the building next.
Sorry, didn't have a straightforward answer on that. It was a good question, though.
Derek, could you, I remember you talking about the recording fee situation in the department, for the benefit of the rest of the council, if you explain why that's kind of a big number.
I'm sorry, I did.
Recording fees. Recording fees.
Recording fees. Oh, the increase on that?
Yeah.
The recorded. Recording fees is what we get charged from the county. Every time we do, anytime we have to record any document or anything like that, they charge us for it. So if it's a lien or your name, that they, they charge us for it. So you can see that we only had 10,000 budgeted this year, and we've already spent 9,000, so it's probably in a hole already. So that's why I increased it to 20,000 to cover that deficit.
It was fees, if I stretch. Are they?
Yeah, they, they put them around me almost every time we move on screen.
Any other questions for this account? Let's move on then.
Well, I do the 4,000 account, because we actually decreased that one. I wanted to get that in there.
That's good. Thank you.
So we ready for unsafe building now?
I'm looking to find it. Is it a tab on this?
No, it's, it's on separate.
Yes. Code enforcement, you've got a code enforcement under there. Code enforcement, what's that? 2234.
You need a mouse.
Somebody stole my mouse, I've been looking around the room. 22 who? 24. 2234. Move on, keep talking.
Okay, and after all that trouble, you guys trying to find all that, there are no changes. So I will take any question.
Why did you say that sooner? I want you to find your mouse. Too bad Tracy's not here tonight, maybe we can get you one.
All right, that is all I have.
Well, thank you, Derek.
Thank you.
I would like to take about a 10-minute break here to, to leave. So we'll, we'll reconvene at 22 to 8.
It was failing the A and B support me eventually. So hopefully that worked.
I'm going by the wall clock tonight, and I know it's wrong, but I did say. Derek?
Mr. Chair. Just to give a little explanation, she sends her apologies, Miss Fields is unable to make it again this evening. So Controller of Polymer is going to present infrastructure and development, and then I am going to present strategic initiatives.
All right. For the infrastructure and development budget, the changes that you see in the salaries and wages all come from the restructuring that I referred to yesterday, or the mayor did when we went through his budget, through that ordinance that I guess also involved finance earlier this year. Beth does a really fantastic job at looking at her six-month spending and adjusts accordingly. So you'll see those adjustments there. She's just looking at what they spent halfway through the year and made reductions accordingly throughout, or increases, she's anticipating increases. I, I do have some notes, if you have any questions on any specific line items, I can try to look them up and give an answer to the best of my ability.
Have a look, everybody, and if you have any questions, just. Emily, I'm assuming the reduction in the insurance provision is reflected by the number of employees covered.
Professional services, you just added this year?
Yes. Pull that up really quick. It's different, engineering consultants is what she was anticipating for that line item.
Engineering was all?
Yes.
For a specific project or what?
Yes, I believe so.
We had a part-time PE working from the engineering office for several years. He no longer does work there, and so I'm guessing she's probably setting up a tab if she can retain. if she can retain consultant engineers occasionally if she needs them.
Okay. Now, the, the note says project engineering slash design. There are no additional questions. We can move into transit.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Engle.
The, um, going down to the licenses. Fifty-seven oh five Riverfront.
Those are, those are revenue accounts.
Okay. Not much revenue. Are we, are those available? I think that's, they're for, uh, bars and restaurants. Is that correct?
They're available. There's a stringent process that has to be followed to qualify, um, because that establishment has to show their Z-tape after the year and they have to, um, I think it's a seventy-thirty split on food versus alcohol, if I recall. And if they don't meet those qualifications, they can't maintain the Riverfront licensing. So that just depends on whether or not the establishment can uphold that end of the, of the deal.
And we're not selling any of those new, or we're not projecting to sell many of those new licenses?
Just depends on whether those businesses come forward with that plan to do so. We've had some that have.
They're still available. There's not a.
They're still available, yeah, they're not maxed out. We've had some that have come and made requests, but then weren't able to fulfill the business model guidelines to receive the licensing.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Do we transit?
I believe Beth did a presentation on the transit budget earlier this year, um, when she was seeking the grant application. Um, any changes in the thousand line items are related to the transit collective bargaining agreement. Um, again, and not following trends of other departments, she did lower the fleet gasoline and oil. Um, I would guess that's based on the trend as you can see through six thirty, it was a low, um, amount. I don't know if there were any routes changed or reduced. I know, I think they had some issues, um, being fully staffed with drivers. So I think that I would assume that it's related to that.
Not route changes, uh, hourly changes for, for the same routes, yeah.
Any questions on transit?
Can we really do transit this quick?
I love to set thickness records. I don't have, I don't have the witty commentary and jokes of Terry Quintero. I'm so sorry. Okay, we'd like to move on to off-street parking. Think you'll see the same as in, uh, transit. I think, uh, just following the logic of tracking the expenditures through mid-year, seeing where they're at and, um, evaluating what the needs would be in the current year, making decreases, decreases and increases where appropriate. Mostly decreases, just the increase in the sewer line item, except bill was trending a bit higher.
Question? Mr. Chairman, I, I, I know this is not a question for you, but I'll ask it anyway. Does, does all the downtown construction, does that affect the off-street parking? Or, I knew it wasn't a question.
It's, um.
How many?
I, I don't know. I've, from, the parking garage, I think is rented by.
I don't think it's affecting it in purchasing parking permits. The only thing that's changed is the police department's enforcement of the parking. We eased up on that to make it easier through construction, so they're not delivering as many parking tickets and just allowing people to park and navigate to the businesses without, um, having to deal with the hourly parking and all that for right now. But I don't think it's influenced the purchase of parking spaces and parking permits monthly and annually.
On the different parking lots?
What's that?
On the different parking lots? Is that what you're talking about?
For coffee in general?
The city wants it, they buy permits for.
Any other questions? Derek, you're done, let's move on.
Okay, the last fund is Loet, and Loet is one that you would have not seen budgeted since two thousand sixteen. Um, we received about a six hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars special local income tax distribution in two thousand sixteen. In two thousand sixteen, that, uh, half of that was used to match the transit grant. Um, one of the uses for those funds was to fund the operations of a public transportation corporation. And we have a balance of three hundred and three thousand nineteen dollars that's basically just been sitting there ever since two thousand sixteen. So this year we have allocated the grant match for transit to Loet, to mutual funds.
Very good. You won't be coming to redevelopment this year. Any questions about that? You're done, aren't you? Okay, Mr. Mayor, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I'm gonna start with the Edit twenty-two forty. There, I'll jump in.
Where's that?
It's under strategic initiatives.
It says Edit Lit twenty-two forty. We're gonna go to that detail tab.
Okay.
All right. So, uh, first you're going to see that twenty-three thousand dollar, that is a projected decrease in revenue. Moving down from that, ten thousand. You'll see that we budgeted ten thousand in twenty-twenty-three, and then there's no twenty-twenty-four allocation. That was insurance refund that we don't anticipate for twenty-twenty-four. That's why that's been removed. That's on the revenue side. Moving down to the three thousand one, you see a twenty thousand dollar, uh, increase. That is our nine-one-one contract with the county. We're in, uh, we just had a nine-one-one meeting and we're anticipating raises. Uh, President Capital was there as well. So that's what that line item is for. Uh, moving down to thirty-nine ninety, the hundred and fifty thousand, that is for mowing, maintaining our mowing contracts. In thirty-nine eighty-three, election expenses, you'll see nothing budgeted for twenty-twenty-four because that's a non-election cycle, so we won't have anything budgeted that year in that particular line item. Uh, thirty-one fifty-one, city's comprehensive plan, you see a two hundred thousand dollar line item. That is for our transit master plan that comes out of the original rising plan. So that was one of the reasons that, uh, Ms. Fields had set up, uh, for engineering and other studies, cause that's also gonna go into the track, transit master plan process. Moving to, uh, railroad spur repairs. I think we ended up leaving that where it is. We did not move that to border work. Is that correct?
No.
Cause I originally moved that, but it was set.
We left, uh, railroad spurs and removed repair traffic lights.
Oh, we moved repair traffic lights to border works.
Yeah, there's already an allocation for repairing, uh, traffic lights in border work. So we removed that from the, and kept it in for our works first.
Moving down to forty-four thirty-five, you see a fifty thousand dollar, uh, decrease in that line item. That is for IT subscriptions and large capital purchases in the IT department, such as the large switch overhaul that we just moved in. In the other equipment line item, uh, you see nothing budgeted for twenty-twenty-four. That is because that was for parks for last year, uh, for some capital purchases, and we are not doing that in twenty-four, so that's, that's, uh, being zeroed out. And then moving down to the four thousand, Edit Projects, City Beautification, you see sixty thousand dollars. That is for weed abatements, and some of that money also went to, uh, some of the, uh, self-watering flower pots and some of that stuff that we put out as beautification throughout downtown in the depot. And then moving down to forty-four oh one, Economic Development, a hundred thousand dollars. Um, some of that supports meltdown, also supports downtown beautification through the two people that are funded that work in the, uh, greenhouse and the parks department, and then just supporting local organizations. We use that to purchase, uh, tables and stuff when we have dinners that the city team attends.
Dave, forty-three thirty-two, did you?
Grant match.
Your grant match.
That is the one that was formally allocated to Rosewood Transit that's going to be in the Loet.
That's in the Loet. That's why it's zeroed.
Okay, so you're zeroing that out there?
Yeah.
And that is it for twenty-two forty, Edit, but I will try to answer any questions you have if you have any.
Any questions, Mr. Chairman? Eagle? Forty-three thirty-eight, Promotion and Marketing. Nothing in there? Is there?
That, we still use a promotion marketing line, but it's just not in this particular line item. It's in, it's in my office's budget. And it didn't change from last year, so when I, I didn't mention it in the budget yesterday cause it's the same line item. Ten minutes. Any other questions?
Okay, we're done.
Midwest Industrial Park, forty-six fifty-one. Starting up at the top on those revenues, those are farm rent. Moving down into contractual services, you have three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars there.
Where? Midwest forty-six fifty-one.
Okay. The three hundred and five thousand dollars is a few things combined. You have some twenty-twenty-two POs that were carried forward for sewer design and engineering, uh, for the Gar Jackson, uh, Road Project and Engineering. Um, that's what is represented there. And then below that, you see a seventy-one thousand dollar reduction in the miscellaneous expense. That was for phase three, um, mowing and demolition in the industrial park. The demolition is done and we have, uh, purchased some of the land and it's getting ready to be shovel-ready, so that's just caused a reduction as the demo is finished and some of that mowing is done now. Moving down into forty-four ten, in the wetland capital improvements, uh, those major projects are done for now, and there are no projects that are ongoing into twenty-twenty-four, so you see a major reduction there of a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. And I will take any questions you have about Midwest Industrial Park.
Any questions? Let's move on.
Tax abatement is twenty-five oh four. This one is fairly simple because there are no new allocations for twenty-four, so that's a pretty quick one.
Thanks.
All right. And then last, uh, American Rescue Plan, zero-one nine-nine. In thirteen oh two, you see overtime. Uh, there are two thirteen oh twos.
I'm sorry, where are you?
I am at the ARPA zero-one nine-nine fund.
Thirteen oh two, thirteen oh two.
Yeah, and you'll see two thirteen oh twos. They're both labeled overtime. One is an oh-three-six-two thirteen oh two, one is an oh-three-seven-oh. One is an eight-hundred-six-thousand, one's a three-hundred-six-thousand.
CTP.
Uh, I'd say, I think.
But it's.
Twelve forty, my four forty.
Or Tracy has it up here. Sorry.
Got it.
Got it, all right. So the, uh, oh-three-six-two thirteen oh two overtime, that represents fire overtime, and that second overtime, that oh-three-seven-zero thirteen oh two overtime is police overtime. So those are split. Uh, in American Rescue Plan, we spoke about that a bit yesterday in opening statements and how we're, um, subsidizing the overtime as we are working to reduce it in both departments. We are finishing up our American Rescue Plan dollars and subsidizing those current overtime costs from that fund.
And what is the current balance as of this week up there?
Of the ARPA funds? Current balance is three million, three hundred and sixteen thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars and sixty-six cents.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And when does that have to be spent, Bob?
This year.
It's the end of next year, right? Or is it? I, I think it.
I think it hasn't been extended, but I think.
Has been covered, it's covered, yeah. It's extended next year.
I think it got extended and that's how we are able to use it.
Moving to, um, the, uh, capital outlays. There is a lot in those line items.
CC forty-four oh one?
No, it's down at the bottom of.
Just down at the bottom of the.
Down at the bottom of the.
ARPA. So first you have the, uh, thirty-nine ninety, other contractual services. We can, we can do that one first. What I was gonna say is we're combining those, oh, December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. We're combining, I was gonna combine, uh, thirty-nine ninety, other contractual services with the capital outlays, four thousand three and four thousand two, cause most of all of that is matching money towards other initiatives. So for example, in the thirty-nine ninety, other contractual services, uh, some of that is matching dollars in some of the applications we have at the state to go towards the new family resource center, to go towards blight elimination. Uh, we are, uh, asking in the health program for the animal welfare study that we spoke a little bit about with the police department. Um, and that's what you see wrapped up in thirty-nine ninety. Moving down to the four thousand three, public safety, again, in the health program, we have initiatives for, uh, applying for the Bearcat that we've spoken about and the body cams. Some of that's gonna be, uh, contingent on whether or not we're approved in that, in that process. And then the downtown revitalization, we'll have matching dollar grants available with the, uh, possible announcement of our new apartments downtown. We know the other downtown businesses will come forward with ideas on how to grow their business and be ready to capture those new customers, and we wanna have grant dollars available for them, uh, for those expansions. And then also in that is the, uh, possibility of the Townsend Town Homes. Those presentations were actually going on today, and so if that project were to come to fruition and we were able to get dollars from the state and they were able to get redevelopment tax credits, then there'd be matching dollars available in that line item.
Questions? Okay. Is that it?
That is it.
And is it?
Before we close, any comment by council or questions that you'd like to raise before we depart company? Mr. Chairman, I guess my only, uh, comment would be to thank both Mayor Snow and Emily for their patience and their help with this budget. This budget has been, in, in the four that I've seen, this has been one that I've understood the most. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate that. Mr. Engle, thank you, and I appreciate all of your work. Uh, I know this is a lot to digest, uh, but everybody sitting here, we, we are in every one of these line items every day. It's a tremendous amount of work and I appreciate you. Appreciate you all taking the time to dive into it with us and, uh, help us move into next year.
Thank you.
When, uh, what's the date that you will out actually bringing budget to council?
Formal introduction of the budget will be on your September eighteenth meeting.
Wow.
Coming.
Yes, and we discussed, um, in Finance Committee, uh, advertising before first reading, so first reading and public hearing, what happened on the same day. Um, there is the requirement of the ten days in between, so, um, that will just give us a little extra time.
So the first meeting in October.
Is it?
October seventh.
Yes.
Public hearing. Yeah, yeah. Well, if you're going to comment or question, we're adjourned.
Well, if there are no further comment or question, we're adjourned.